Good evening, everyone. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Well, we're gonna start this evening's meeting with a presentation from Southfield Commission on Senior Adults. I think Ms. Karen Schrock is here with us today. Always good to see you.
Thank you very much for another opportunity to update you and the community on the progress of the Southfield Commission on Senior Adults. This report covers time since the report of last year in August. That presentation focused on our work to create an age-friendly Southfield. We've made significant progress, and we're proud to report that we have developed a plan for the city and submitted it to key officials for review prior to our formal submission to AARP. More details on moving toward age-friendly Southfield and other key activities follow. First, with respect to age-friendly Southfield, we have prepared a plan for the city which includes input from our residents, data on the senior adult population, and action plans to make our city an even better place for seniors. The plan, including the appendices, exceeds 100 pages, so it is not attached to this report. We have attached to the material you have there a bit of a table of contents. If any of you are interested in the complete report, let us know, and we'll gladly send it to you. The plan addresses key findings from our survey, community conversations, domain group meetings, and research, community stakeholder presentations, and input from city boards, commissions, and staff. Since last August, we have held one more community conversation and initiated several projects to launch our work prior to completion and submission of the plan. For example, we discovered during our community conversations that many residents were unaware of the various transportation options available in the community. That led to the development of a transportation brochure, which we have been distributing throughout the community to increase awareness. We've also attached a copy of that brochure to your materials. In addition, we learned that many senior adults lack technology skills necessary to access information available on the Internet. We implemented a pilot technology training program in collaboration with the Southfield Public Schools, and the training was provided by our very own bright and patient Southfield A&amp;T High School students. We will return later this year asking you to recognize the staff and the students. Our message to you is that we're not waiting on the plan to begin making improvements in the lives of senior adults in our community. The work has already begun. Many exciting efforts are underway, and we know that you and other city officials will be proud of our efforts. We will be happy to provide as much detail as you desire at a later point. The second update is on Age Friendly Michigan. At last year's presentation, we requested that you and the mayor issue a resolution in support of an Age Friendly Michigan. You did that. At that time, AARP was lining up support for a statewide effort, and Southfield responded. We have continued to participate in the planning efforts for an Age Friendly Michigan, and Southfield is recognized as a leader in this effort. The proof is that our mayor will serve on a panel at the first Age Friendly Michigan statewide conference in October. In addition, our state representative, Kyra Harris Bolden, will speak as one of the first legislators to sign on in support of an Age Friendly Michigan. Our city can be proud of these and other accomplishments. Third, our COSA meetings. We continue to meet monthly, third Thursdays at four. We're fortunate to have involvement and support of three key city departments: Parks and Rec, Planning, and Human Services. I've listed for you some of the groups who have come in to speak at our meetings during the last year. Our meetings are very educational, so we invite you, of course, to attend any of our meetings. In addition to the 12 COSA members, our meetings include our three liaisons from the city, and usually between five and 10 members of the public. COSA Communication. In addition to our monthly meetings, COSA prepares a quarterly article for the Southfield Scribe, and these articles are focused on our age-friendly work. The next item is COSA Bylaws and Members. I would ask that all COSA members who are here please stand. We, I listed our current members for you. In addition to me, we have Kendell Murphy, our vice chairperson, David Walker, our secretary, Gerard Cunningham, Earlene Trailer Neal, Marilyn Hogar, Latina Denson, Mitchell Simon, Sarah Habbo, Deborah Smith, Denise Stewart, and Cheryl Walker. So in summary and looking ahead, we continue to advocate for senior adults in our community. For example, we will play a role in ensuring that senior adults know about and participate in the census next year. An undercount negatively affects our community, so we want to do everything possible to make sure that seniors are counted. Our priority will be implementing the plan for an Age Friendly Southfield and working with statewide colleagues to create an Age Friendly Michigan. We appreciate the support of our efforts from the council, from Mayor Seiver, from Fred Zorn, and others. We think that we are the only entity in Michigan that has developed an age-friendly plan primarily with volunteers. As we move to the next phase, implementation, there will be a need for a larger investment of time by city staff to oversee the process. In addition, we are asking that each council person serve as a champion for one of the eight domain areas. So we would like you to look at that and see if it's housing, if it's transportation, if it's communication. We'd like each of you to serve as a champion. We have no doubt that we will be successful as a city because we work together and recognize the importance of retaining current and attracting new senior adults to Southfield. Making Southfield age-friendly makes it more livable for everyone. That is our goal. Thank you.
All right.[534.51][534.51](Applause). More importantly, we thank you for your leadership, and thank everyone that's here as part of COSA for all the work that you're doing within the city. Like you said, I mean volunteering your time and energies means a whole lot and helps to keep us a city strong, and especially for our seniors, which is a very important population for us, so thank you again very much.
I'd like to remind our listeners and viewers, and I know all of you know that 40% of our population is age 50 and above, and it will only increase in the future.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I have read the first draft of the report. It's very impressive. I've communicated with Ms. Schrock and Ms. Murphy. We are meeting next week to do a little, I have a couple suggestions of things, but really, I think, one of the things that really comes through in the report is the whole information and communication piece is something that we need to strengthen. When you look at the survey results, you see a lot of people said they weren't aware, they weren't aware, they weren't aware. So that's something that certainly we're gonna have to work on. But the commission has done, things like this go a long way to building that awareness in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
Ms. Schrock, one of my first, I think you might have, one of my first meetings as a councilperson was COSA, and you guys started that project then, and I've been supportive 100% ever since then. And I think you've done a, your group has done an excellent job of getting to this particular point, and that this will be the shining beacon for the city of Southfield. And I supported it back there when it was the embryonic stage, and obviously, you and your group has done a fantastic job.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Again, thank you so much, Ms. Schrock, for all you do for COSA. Is the report on the city's website?
No. After we meet with the mayor and after we submit it to AARP, we will. And Mike Mannion is working with us to help us have a lot of products like that brochure on the city website.
So if I want a copy of the report, I can?
We can send it to you, absolutely.
Email it to me?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll print it and bring it to you, whatever you want.[707.13][707.13](Laughter).
I'd like a copy, Allison.
Okay. Well, we can certainly do that.
I think you, I think we'd all like to take a look at it, actually, so if email could be sent to the council, we'd appreciate that.
We will. Thank you. Thank you for all of your support. And again, Fred Zorn, we've never asked for anything and had him turn us down, so I just wanna recognize that.[731.82][731.82](Laughter). Never.
You can't say the same thing about me, that's a problem.[736.82][736.82](Laughter).
Thank you so much.
You're the first person to ever say that.[740.01][740.01](Laughter).
Thank you for all the work you do, young lady.
Mr. Burke, they make very persuasive arguments.
I understand. All right, very good. We got one set of minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Brightwell?
I make a motion that we approve special meeting minutes of August 5, 2018.
Support? They're moved by Mr. Brightwell and supported by Mr. Frazier that we approve the special meeting minutes of August 5, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meetings are, minutes are approved. Consent agenda, before we make a motion on that, item E.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Madam Attorney?
If I could request that item E from the consent agenda be moved to the attorney portion. Item E concerns the proposed ordinance to opt out of the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, and we will assign it a number if this body is so inclined to adopt that emergency ordinance, it will be Ordinance 1708 under the attorney portion.
Very good. Okay, no problem. All right. So I will accept a motion for the rest of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, F, G, and H.
Support? They're moved by Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, F, G, and H. Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the items are approved. We have, I think, five public hearings this evening, so we'll get, go and jump right on into those. Mr. Crowe?[851.88][851.88](Laughter).
(Inaudible).[853.88][853.88](Laughter). And I do think, we did, just so people know, even before we get to item B, in our study session, we did decide that we would not be taking any action tonight on that particular item. Of course, we'll still have the hearing, and people are welcome to come and speak their concerns, and we hope to use those comments or concerns for us to help us make a better decision to a date certain, I think, and we'll set that meeting, that meeting date at the end of this evening, today. Okay? So, but, for that, Mr. Crowe, go right ahead, okay?
Our first public hearing tonight is PZTA 19-0001, which is a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V, Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45. Zoning of the Code of the City of Southfield by amending Article IV general requirements and adding a new section 5.50 entitled Sexually Oriented Business and other amendments as needed. This update is probably the first one done in almost 50 years. The industry has changed over those 50 years. There are new types of businesses, there's new qualified definitions, so we worked with the city attorney to update definitions, to prohibit certain types of sexually oriented businesses, updated the licensing approval and denial process, and then potential locations, zoning requirements, hours of operation, and signage. So we are requesting public hearing be held on those text amendments at this time.
Okay. All right, I will now call the public hearing to, I will open the public hearing on this particular item. If there's any one present that would like to speak to this particular matter, you may come to the lectern, and you will have, if you please give your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439, and I just wanna give a shout-out to those residents that still have confidence and faith in me after 36 years in this city. Thank you again. I agree with what Fercassi said in the study session. What is this city coming to? We're doing zoning ordinances for sexually oriented businesses. We're trying to turn Northland into a weed store. You know, where is this city going to? And is all of this stuff, and I'm gonna call it stuff, that you guys wanna do, this can't be the master plan. I was there when they developed the master plan. I don't remember any of this stuff being in there. Now, it seems like in the dark, and when we're not privy to the meeting because we lack transparency, all of these zoning things seem to just appear in our master plan. I think you should give the people at home more information on what you mean by establishes guidelines for sexually oriented businesses. Is this for the brothel? The toy, sex toy store? I think we need more information before you guys just go voting on this stuff and putting a rubber stamp on it and then issuing an ordinance number. Is this what you want the generation after you to have to contend with? 'Cause if they spend all their time undoing a lot of these things that were not right for the city, we're never gonna get anything done. And I'm gonna be around as long as I live, and whatever amount of time that is, I'll still be coming to these meetings, but you need to be a little bit more clear, because you don't seem to release the details here that you do in the study session. Now, all of y'all up there, when you ran for office, you ran on transparency. Where is it? When are we gonna see it? And are you as transparent as you purported that you would be when you ran for office? My time is up.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that's present that'd like to speak to this issue, you're welcome to come to the lectern, give your name and address for the clerk, and we'll, you have three minutes. Seeing none other, the public hearing is closed. Chair, do you have anything else to add at this point?
Just, if the council has any questions, we've studied this several times.
Okay.
I'll just add that the old terminology of adult cabarets, adult shooters, are, are being updated to deal with today's uses such as sexual countercenters and other sexually oriented businesses. And this protects the city and limits the use and location. And currently, we do not have a single sexually oriented business within our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel? Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that. I think there's a misunderstanding that we're jumping the, jumping the tracks on letting everything come into Southfield, and I would like to say that every once in a while, we're faced with what the state or the federal government considers a legitimate business. And if we took a position that, no, we aren't gonna have this in our city under any circumstances, we'd find ourselves in court, and we would probably lose. What we do when these appeals come to us is we try to find the most palatable thing that we can to allow them to do business, because either the state or the federal government says it's a legitimate business, even though we think it's a terrible business. So what we try to do is limit their exposure to our kids and the public, and the schools, and churches, and other things, and yet stay within the law so that we don't go to court. So I don't want anyone to be misled that we're going wild on allowing everything into our community. So with that, I'll stop talking.
Would you like to make a motion?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Unless somebody else has, yeah, Mr. Mayor, go right ahead.
I think it's important to point out that this is about not allowing rather than allowing, and I think the speaker indicated that we were allowing things. This is about disallowing.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Counsel, any other?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move PZTA 1901.
Support? They're moved by Mr. Fercassi and supported by Mr. Brightwell that we introduce ordinance 1707 zoning amendment for PTZA 19-001.
Through the chair. I believe the first motion is to approve, and then you'll take a second motion to introduce.
Okay. So can we get, do we get another motion?
It's just, it just is a metasomatics to approve.
According to the city plan, I also move.
Okay.
Then we take a vote.
Okay. So we'll change it to approval on this issue, all right? Do we need a roll call vote, or just record votes? Okay, very good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to introduce ordinance number 1707.
Mr. President, I move that we approve, that we introduce ordinance number 1707.
Support?
They're moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Morris, that we introduce ordinance number 1707. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ordinance has been introduced.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next public hearing is PZTA 19-0002, zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V, Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45, Zoning of the Code of the City of Southfield by amending Article II definitions and Article IV general requirements, Article IX Office Service District, Article XERO, EROM, Education Research Office District, Education Research Office Limited District, Article 18 General Business District, Article 19 Light Industrial District, Article 20 Light Industrial District, and other amendments as required. Other revisions may become necessary for the city of Southfield dealing with the medical marijuana facilities. And I'm gonna give a brief high overview. And this also includes amending the definition of a hotel and text amendments to the Northland Overlay Development District, prohibitions and permitted uses. We tried to prepare this as a chart, this as a guide, that this is not the zoning text amendments themselves, but it does give a high-level overview of the five regulated medical marijuana facilities. A is safety compliance facility. It's most similar to medical labs. This, as proposed, would be permitted in the Office Service, ERO, EROM, Education Research Office, and B3 General Business, and Northland ODD. These are similar to medical labs. No consumption on-site of marijuana or marijuana-infused products. And these labs receive marijuana from a marijuana facility or registered primary caregiver to test for contaminants, THC, or other cannabinoids, and then send the results back. As currently permitted, we have listed potential, and I caution everybody that these maps are potential zoning site areas that meet the zoning classifications. So anywhere there are currently the BS, B3, and OS zone parcels, medical labs would be permitted. We currently have around 40 to 44 medical labs within the city. Our second classification is the grower. The state does license growing facilities for Class A, which is 500 plants, a Class B, which is 1,000 plants, or a Class C, which is 1,500 marijuana plants. The state does allow stackable at the same location, so if there's different businesses in the site can comply with more than one 1,500 plant business, then more than one business can be located on the site. These are most similar to our light industrial industrial districts, where other growing facilities, as I said, whether you're growing tomatoes or mushrooms, this would be similar to it. Our proposed district requirements and buffering regulations say that no grower can be located within 500 feet from a residential district or a residential use. A drug-free school zone, as defined by the federal government, is, requires 1,000-foot separation, so we would be proposing additional 500 feet. 500 feet separation from adult-regulated uses, schools, religious institution, childcare facility, or park, and 1,500 feet from pawn shops or alternative financial service establishments. No consumption on-site of marijuana or marijuana-infused products would be permitted. Proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. These would all also require to be approved through the special land use requirements for each of these districts, which triggers a public hearing notice and final approval by city council. And again, these maps, I just caution the viewers that these are just draft potential locations that would meet these buffering requirements. Processor is a license-authorized purchase of marijuana from a grower and sale of infused products or marijuana to a provisioning center. Again, these would be limited to light industrial industrial districts in the Northland Overlay Development District if they meet similar buffering requirements, as I previously mentioned, similar of hours of operation, and again, would be required to be approved through special land use. And these, again, are only potential sites that would be qualified. The fourth classification is secure transporter. It license, the author, license authorizes storage and transportation of marijuana and associated money between facilities. This would be located in the light industrial industrial Northland ODD. Per the Medical Marijuana Licensing Board Regulations, no consumption on-site of marijuana or marijuana-infused products. or marijuana infused products. The hours of operation start a half an hour earlier and a half an hour later than the grower and the processor. There is a maximum six-mile difference within our community of 27 square miles. A transporter should be able to get to anywhere in the city within a half an hour. And this also, that would be in addition to the 12 hours that a facility may be open Monday through Friday. And these are, again, potential locations where a secure transporter may be eligible. And then finally, the fifth medical marijuana facility is licensed by the state are provisioning centers, most similar to retail establishments, and licensee can sell marijuana to a qualified patient or registered primary caregiver. So I believe during the study session, Mr. Frazier asked if someone could contract directly with the processor, and it appears that the, a registered primary caregiver would have to get their marijuana through one of these provisioning centers and could not go directly to the grow establishment. These would be allowed or permitted potentially in B3 general business in the Northland ODD. They have similar setback requirements from the other three grower, processor, and secure transporter, but there are additional requirements to reduce or discourage clustering. A provisioning center must be at least 500 feet from another provisioning center. Also, if there's a gas station that qualifies, the sale of medical marijuana or marijuana infused products would be prohibited, similar to our alcohol sales are prohibited at gas stations. And those additional requirements came out of your last study session. And this just shows an example of how there, when we imported our additional buffering from residential districts, it did not pick up a multifamily residential complex. You apply the 500-foot buffering from that residential use, it eliminates a number of the original potential sites. So if this ever does get passed, on a site-by-site basis, we would vet this through our mapping and field work to determine whether or not a site is eligible or is not eligible. Also, the initial buffering showed two potential gas station locations that met all the other setback requirements, but since gas stations per se are not allowed to sell medical marijuana products, these two would be eliminated from potential sites. Now, if they cease to exist as gas stations, then there's a bunch of regulatory requirements that have to do to upgrade the site. And then finally, we've applied buffering to potential marijuana facilities on the former Northland Center site. Again, council could consider allowing one, some, all, or none. I think there was at least some previous discussion about allowing grow facilities underground, and the council could limit grow facilities to only underground, and that could be done through the zoning, rezoning of the Overlay Development District. So the council could consider putting additional requirements on this site versus other sites. This is the previous chart with dimensional and setback requirements that have been updated. Some of this is based on the broker giving us feedback from market conditions. So, for example, we still do not want to permit a single-story drive-through restaurant, but we have allowed or added in, under consideration, that a drive-through end cap to an existing shopping center or proposed shopping center may be permitted. And each one of those, again, would be approved on a site-by-site basis. In consideration of the potential for dealership, we've amended the ordinance to allow for those dealership to be located only in what was previously identified as the retail subarea, and we've changed the minimum of square footage requirements from 50,000 square feet to as negotiated through the ODD. And then finally, I've presented design standards and guidelines to make sure that as Northland's, the former Northland Center is developed over time with multiple developers, that we have a unified streetscape gateway, landscape, pedestrian, streetscape elements, and those standards have been updated in the ordinance. And then finally, again, with regard to permitted and prohibited uses, we've listed various sub-districts where these could be considered, along with the other 30 permitted uses in the Northland Overlay Development District. So with that, that's just a high-level overview of proposed regulations for your consideration, and it might be appropriate to open the public hearing at this time.
Very well, thank you, Jerry. So at this time, we will open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak to the item just discussed by our city planner, please come forward, give me name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Pamela Gero, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. And again, residents, thank you so much. Well, I totally agree with what Councilman Fracassi said. Why are we pushing this? The city of Southfield is known as the city of trees so that we can apply for grants to get money to do things. Now it seems like we're going to be considered the city of weeds. Why are we pushing this? I'm sure at some point in time, everybody up there has gone to some kind of form and agreed that we needed criminal justice reform in our United States. All of you up there know that there are many black men and women and other races that are sitting in jail for petty crimes because they thought about sale and distribution and transporting and dropping it off to their customers. Now because of former Republican House Speaker John Boehner, this has turned into just let everybody come and make money. Everybody is saying now, come to Southfield because you can get a weed store in Southfield. How many other cities are allowing this? I know you guys see the line at the blood plasma place. It wraps around the building sometimes because people want to sell their blood for a few If you need it for medical purposes, great. But what are you going to do about having the stores and the smell? Are we going to have some kind of ozone deodorant so that we won't smell it? So that if we ride by a place, it won't be in our clothes? You know, when the brothers back in the day smoked it, it was a private thing. The guys lit incense and put tiles underneath the door so you couldn't smell it. And what are we doing now? Just saying, let's group it all together. Let's make money. Let's see what the city can make. You guys should have never purchased Northland. You purchased it for $2.1 million four years ago. You paid all that money for development plans and divisioning session, and you still have nothing, and the best you can do for development is a weed store? My time is up.
If there's anyone else that's here that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Warren Hudson with Friedman Management Company. I believe you guys are in receipt of a letter from David Friedman in relation to this, but I just wanted to read the letter into the record if I could briefly. I'm writing to register my opinion, excuse me, my opposition to city council allowing one or more marijuana provisioning centers be located in the northwest corner of Telegraph Road and Northwestern Highway. As I'm sure you know, my company's been an active investor in Southfield real estate for many years now. We previously owned interest in the American Center Building on Franklin Road, the Raleigh Office Center on Telegraph, the Riverwood Research Center on 10 Mile on Telegraph, and we continue to own Onyx Office Plaza on Telegraph, the Mars Office Center on Telegraph, 26711 Northwestern Highway, and most notably, the 1 million square foot Galleria Office Center Complex at Telegraph and Northwestern Highway. We purchased Galleria Office Center, which is the second largest office property in Southfield, in 2016 after it went through a lengthy foreclosure process. Its occupancy rate had fallen to a low of 40%. Since that time, we invested considerable money into the property, and not only to improve its physical condition and aesthetics, but also to increase occupancy and to, again, make it a thriving office community that attracts regional and national tenants who not only work, but also live, eat, and entertain themselves all within the city of Southfield. In an effort to further this vision, we recently contracted to purchase the AMC Star Theater property on 12 Mile Road, and while our plans for that site are still in the preliminary stages, we do envision that the theater serving as part of the larger development within the Galleria Office Center would also include office space, restaurants, retail, and other entertainment venues to further the live-work-play atmosphere that's taking place throughout many of the country's leading cities. I tell you that not to enthuse you or impress you, but simply to let you know that agreeing to allow a marijuana provisioning center at the corner of Northwest, Northwestern Highway and Telegraph Road could create a very negative impact on our development plans. What Fortune 500 company would be interested in establishing a regional or national office in a location that was walking distance to any kind of a dispensary? What restaurant or retail chain would be willing to invest tens of thousands of dollars into a storefront that's next door to a provisioning center? And what mother or father would want to drop their child off in a location where immediately adjacent to the facility marijuana is being bought and sold? So while we recognize that the public opinion strongly favors the sale of recreational and medical marijuana in Michigan, and that municipalities are making plans to allow for these types of businesses, as you have to, we simply ask that you use good judgment in determining where to locate them. Some studies in Colorado, where marijuana has been legal for many years, have shown that there's a statistically significant increase in crime in neighborhoods where these dispensers are located. They include everything from aggravated assault, auto theft, burglary, drug and alcohol offenses, public disorder, and so on. I'm sure you agree that those are not the types of things that you want to see in a gateway location to our city, and we don't either, so...
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's anyone else that'd like to speak to this matter, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Harold Hill, Southfield resident, post office box 76163, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I'd like to thank the Friedman Group because they just answered one of my questions. I know in 2017, the Friedman Group was hired to actually market Northland and to sell or develop because they got an extension to do that in 2018, so I can understand their concerns, because they got a consultant fee also to market that same facility, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm glad to see that it wasn't that group that decided to opt in for the marijuana grow stations. And we bought Northland in 2015 to kind of stop, I've heard, a possible jail from being put there, some unsavory souls, or whatever, so that we can have the best things put there. In 2017, we put a mound of dirt there, and I asked about that in 2017 because the neighbors didn't understand what was going on, and the council made sure that they mentioned to me that they had planned on filling in the tunnels at Northland, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, it was in March of 2017. Kind of disappointed, though, to see that this is the direction they're going in. I mean, I understand that it opted in, and I have nothing against the businesses doing business, but it brought up some good points from the Friedman Group, that our values are really high here in Southfield. We want to keep our values high. We took a big hit in 2007, '08, '09, '10, and I've been a 29-year resident, and so to keep the property values up, maybe we can find something else, especially at Northland, the gateway of our city. So I just wanted to plant that seed and watch it grow. Have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other residents or individuals that would like to speak, please come forward. You need to be a name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Bryan. Address is 23169 Morningside, Southfield, Michigan, 48034. I grew up in Southfield my whole life, from when I was one-year-old till I was 18 and graduated from Southfield Lutheran in 2001. My family, we own the Medicine Man of Ann Arbor. We're located in the city of Ann Arbor, probably one of the few minority-owned medical marijuana businesses. We just got placed as a representative on the Michigan Social Equity Board, so our goal is to go out to different cities and teach about how young entrepreneurs can get involved with this. That was kind of stated earlier about the war on drugs and how certain minorities have been more targeted versus others, and it's a social equity program to bring that back, to bring some balance to this and to help people out. Being in Ann Arbor, we actually share our location with the DCFU Bank, Starbucks, Clear University, and addressing some of their odor concerns, it's amazing what you can do when you put your mind to it, where we were actually to eliminate all of our odor concerns with the, with our neighbors by prepackaging during certain hours of the day. And that way, a lot of the medicine that's coming in now through the state is already going to be prepackaged, so a lot of that odor concerns will be eliminated with provisioning centers are concerned. They're small little tubes that you can love, kind of smell in, and they're very discreet and not noticeable. So we've been able to cooperate with a bank, a university, and Starbucks. So sometimes it's just the fear of the unknown, and once you see it, it's not that bad. We also hope to keep Southfield with its high standards, as I said. Being on the Social Equity Board, we're hoping to be able to bring some light and break these stigmas and teach people about how to bring entrepreneurship into this new era, but in a professional manner. That's one thing that stands out with us at Medicine Man is that we try to do this in the most professional manner that we can, and we break a lot of stigmas. We've been able to go to University of Michigan, where I also went to University of Michigan, and so we were glad to be in Ann Arbor, and I would love, be my dream, to come back here to Southfield to be able to help out and just break these stigmas, because medicinal marijuana helps so many people out. We do a lot of cancer patients, patients that are fighting epilepsy. About three of our staff members have epilepsy, and because of cannabis oil, they haven't had a seizure in two years or so. So it's a lot that can benefit Southfield, and we just think that if you bring in the right businesses, and that's one thing about this industry, is that it's probably one of the most scrutinized and one of the hardest to get a license, so those who can get a license are probably going to be one of your most outstanding businesses, upstanding businesses as well. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any other members?
Hassan Jawad, 25212 Evergreen Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48075. I am a local developer, property owner, and business owner in the city of Southfield since 1992. I'm here tonight to tell you that I'm adamantly against the medical marijuana facilities in our city of any kind. I've asked myself repeatedly, what value does this bring to our city, and I can't come up with a single reason why. Families, businesses, students, investors do not decide where they want to live, work, or go to school, or invest because there's an abundance of medical marijuana facilities in their city. We look for parks, good schools, and a safe community, and medical marijuana facilities of any kind don't bring any of those things. I see no value and agree with Councilman Fracassi and believe we need to opt out of medical marijuana facilities. If things change in the future, we always have the opportunity to opt in. When things were down and out in this city and I had vacant resident commercial property in the city, I told the city that I would not have pawn shops, check cashing, and any other businesses in the city that did not meet the Southfield standard. I'm asking, once again, that we continue to maintain the Southfield standard. The sale and development of Northland to be a grow facility should not be a motivating factor for our city to sell its soul. I beg you all to study this further and choose to opt out. Thank you.
My name is Jacob Abraham, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 75 Hillsdale Road. I'm a state-licensed provisioning center owner. Unfortunately, there's some, a lot of negative perceptions on marijuana. I'm here to bring you some of the positives. Most of my patients are the elderly. There's a big opiate crisis going on in this country, and people are looking for a natural, safe way to deal with and manage their pain, their stress, and the problems that come with everyday life. There are cancer patients who this gives them, it puts a smile on their face for five minutes a day, and it lets them sleep and it gives them an appetite... minutes a day, and it lets them sleep, and it gives them an appetite. This is a medicine. This does work. I see it every day in my store. I'm located in Ypsilanti, Michigan. We've been open since 2012. We've had zero, zero police incidents at our stores. We've had zero problems. We've had zero violations. It's a good thing. I'm glad you guys are considering it. Please block out the reefer madness, because your constituents need it. They need it to live a comfortable life. Thanks.
I'm sorry, sir, did we get your address?
Sure.
For the record, please.
Seventy-five Hillsdale Road. Thank you.
What city and state?
Bloomfield Hills, Michigan.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm an Oakland County resident. I've been driving through Southfield, shopping at 1212 since I was eight years old. Thank you.
All set, thank you. Is there any other individuals that would like to speak to this particular matter? Please come forward. Again, just name an address for the record, please.
Delanda Haynes, 24501 Kenso. I don't have all the facts about the marijuana issue, but I do know that when I drive on Eight Mile, I see enough of the green lights and the little plants that you can do a little bus tour. So before you get to us, you can get your fix, healing, or whatever. And I say that because if there's a saturation in the radius that we already have that, why don't we consider continuing to positively use our land for other things? Just like, there's not a Chick-fil-A here, there's not a Saks Fifth Avenue here, there's not a lot of things here that we can go after and do, and think about doing, and consider the fact that everybody else can have those other things, and we can concentrate on better things. And we're not saying that people don't get healed, or whatever, you know, get your fix or whatever, but there are positive things that we can do, and I think that we need to seriously consider a lot of the factors that are involved in that. This is going to be saturated, and the weight that it may put on our law enforcement department and lots of other things. First of all, that's a corner, and if you come into the city, you want to have something that, I mean, just think about your kids doing a bus tour. Oh, that's the marijuana place. You can take a tour. You can't take your kids there for a tour, what, you're going to give them a cookie in the end? I mean, I'm just saying. Let's think about all these things. We don't have all the facts about it, and you all may have more than we do, but I'm pretty sure that we need to look at this from a different standpoint. I know what you're doing right now, it's just putting some parameters in place, but we need to have a better positive spin on what we're doing for the vision, and let's go back to looking at that for that thing and not be so caught up, I guess, I don't know if it's the money or what it is, but I think we need to really, really seriously consider this, you know, and not that I got healed, or I got this, whatever. I was in a building that does not allow smoking, that does not allow marijuana, and I walked in that building, and it's a building I have to go in all the time to do business. I could not breathe, my eyes were watering, and if I stayed longer, I probably would have had a contact. So I didn't need healing for my back, but I'm just thinking about those type of things that we need to look at, you know, so no offense to the people that need the healing. There are other ways to get some healing. I can tell you about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other individuals here tonight that'd like to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel, we already decided in a study that we were not going to take any action today, so I think we can just, we're going to set a date before we leave this evening for us to discuss this further. We did want to hear from the public, though, today, and we appreciate all the comments that came forward, and I hope that those things will help us as we deliberate at a later date, so we will have a date certain set before we leave tonight's meeting. Is there anything else that anybody might want to add to that, or can we move on to the next item? All right, Ms. Freeman?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Do you want to take a motion to set a date certain at this time?
I'd put it under schedule.
It'd be appropriate, under schedule portion, but...
Do it now.
Do it now, that's fine. Just to be consistent with what we've done for other public hearings, it'd be appropriate to take the motion now.
September ninth?
Sure.
Yeah, that's all he did, he just wanted to go home. I know you had some other items on the ninth. Do you want to set another date for that week?
Yeah, I was hoping for another, the ninth, a regular business. We, staff has a good-sized agenda coming together for the ninth. But if there's another date, I had, Council President, I threw out a Wednesday, a Thursday evening, but obviously, whatever the pleasure is of council...
Just for clarification, if I could.
Go ahead.
This is not about the study meeting. This is to set, postpone to a date certain so that the public who has come know that you're going to be taking this item up again, so it should be at one of your regular meetings. That's irrespective of you having study sessions prior to.
Okay, so the next, what's the date on the next?
So I think there's a September 26 meeting, or there's October?
Sixteenth.
Right, there's a sixteenth, and then?
And then a 23rd.
Twenty-third.
Okay.
And again, I only stress that because you have public here now, so they know that the date is...
That's fine, no, absolutely. We want that to be clear. Does the sixteenth come forward, everybody, or 23rd?
Is that a regular meeting date? That's not a regular meeting date, that's funny.
I'm just saying, just so that people know, like as Terry was just saying, that's all I'm saying. So we're going to bring it back on the sixteenth?
Now, this item is so critical, I want to be able to spend as much time as we can with it. Will this interfere with anything else you have that might be bumping heads with stuff?
On the ninth, a number of council people had asked for an update on roads. We were planning, on the ninth, we were planning on doing a financial update on the roads, but I can work around schedules, and if, you know, if this is a priority of council, we'll make it work.
Yeah, I think this should get as much in-depth conversation as can, because we want to leave nothing on the table with respect to conversion about this, so we just have us, with this item only, on that particular date?
No, I don't think we should move the roads. I think that's an important one. I think we should stick with the roads, because we...
No, I'm saying the sixteenth.
I think on the ninth, I could get the roads down to a twenty-minute report for council. I mean, if that's, if we'd like to do both, but we can also do the roads as sixteen, too. And I can also share that information to council, that I'm expecting to get the report the last week of September.
Okay.
Is anybody opposed to the sixteen? If we've already got an agenda pretty much set for the ninth?
I'm not, I think that's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, sixteen, we have enough time to discuss it, yeah.
Give me the dates again, would you please?
Just, it's the regular meeting of the sixteen.
September sixteenth.
Not an extra meeting, I think. So we'll put date certain, September sixteenth.
You need to make a motion to postpone to a date certain.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we postpone this action to a date certain, which will be September the sixteenth.
As far, they move, my Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we move item PZTA 19-002 to a date certain of September sixteenth, at our regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
And again, that's just for the public, and it, then we don't have to go through the whole public notice requirements, and now we know. And again, you could postpone it at that point, but at least everyone knows you're going to discuss it again on the sixteen.
Very good.
All right, thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Freeman, I think you got the next three.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here today to discuss RPT Realty and their relocation into the city of Southfield. They've requested assistance, they, for us to partner with them on a PA 328. Ross Gallantine of RPT is here for a short presentation, after which we'd like to hold a public hearing to discuss this application being placed in an existing district. The district was put in place on February 27, 2017, so we'll have one public hearing. So I'm going to turn it over to Ross.
Good evening. Ross Gallantine, address 31500 Northwestern Highway, Farmington Hills. You might know the original RPT company was Ramco Gershenson with the Gershenson Brothers and Mike Ward. Back in 1996, we were located behind the Toys 'R Us, that was our office building. We moved out to Farmington Hills in 2004. We are thrilled to try to come back here to Southfield in the Oakland Commons Building. The centers we owned, Tel 12 Mall, which you know, we've took it out from a mall and developed it for the Lowe's. We actually got the Alta that's going to be opening up soon there. We run first-class centers throughout the United States, and we're looking forward to be back into, we really like the Town Center. We've invested, I'm sorry, we've invested a lot of money in our shopping centers, and like was mentioned before, we're trying to bring a lifestyle center to our centers so people come for entertainment, and they stay not just to shop, but to experience. So we feel that's the right way to go with our shopping centers. We are looking at the Oakland Commons Building, and we like the amenities that are around there, the restaurants, the music that's after work to keep people there longer. So we work and play, we thought it was a great place for our company. We are looking for approximately abatement of taxes, we're moving sixty-three of our employees would come out here, and we're looking for approximately $113,000 over a five-year period. You still collect our real estate taxes, we're moving into approximately 12,500 square feet of office space, and we're investing, you know, approximately $600,000, $700,000 in furniture and equipment into our space. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, we need to open the public hearing up first, so you can just have a seat right there if you will. The public hearing is open. Anyone that'd like to speak to this particular matter, the Economic Development Initiative for RPT, you have, give us your name and number, and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Now, I could just give my PO box and not the city and state, or do you want the city and state, meaning the whole address? Pamela Jarrow, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. I am very familiar with Tel 12 Mall, or 12 Mile and Telegraph Retail Little Center Complex. When you were Ramco and Gershenson, and I knew your contact person there, you were not a good corporate citizen, and I'll tell you why. I used to live in the back of that facility. When I moved there in 1986, it was a beautiful fence there, it had a gate there that they left open so that the people in the apartment could access the retail there, and we knew that it was closed at a certain date, and if you didn't get through the gate, you had to walk all the way around. It was great. When you put the Meyer there and all the new retail, you put up the cheapest fence. I tried for two and a half years to get this company, Ramco Gershenson, to put up a concrete post and panel wall so that we could stop the people that was stealing from the mall running over to our complex. They could slide underneath the fence, you could pull out three or four slats and go all the way through it. It was so bad that the Dodge dealership had to put a fence with a brick wall there to stop them from driving through the complex when they would steal cars. So you were not always a good corporate citizen, and you never did that, and thank God I moved. But I really loved my apartment, and I moved for a lot of those reasons. In addition to you not being a good corporate citizen in that respect, when you did the project, the city allowed you to go several years without completion. When I came and did my little investigation, they were still short of planting twenty-six trees. And you know why they got away with it? Because there was no oversight. Nobody checked, not even the tree lady, to see if they completed everything that they were supposed to do for that project. Well, they eventually did, but it took me a lot of time and effort. I really care about that area, and I think before you do this project, you should finish over there. You should put a concrete post and panel wall, which would be a sound buffer, so that the people that live over there, and I still have a lot of friends that live there, that they can have some peace without people running through the fence when they steal from the stores. Do that first before you do a big thing, and then I'll support this.
Public...
And my time is up.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Hi there, Stephanie English, 28735 San Carlos, Southfield, 48076. And I've been always very educated on the tax abatement program, and I do support it. It's simply a business tool, it's a good retention tool for businesses in the city. We have been doing this for over a decade very successfully. Several years ago, I remember requesting from Shelley Freeman a dialogue in terms of what companies possibly failed in fulfilling their tax abatement promises. The percentage of failure was very, very small. We are not the only city that offers a tax abatement process, again, for businesses. If there was a heavy failure rate, then of course I, you know, would have some objections. But based on the fact that there is a template for tax abatements, not only in Southfield, Michigan, but for other cities also, again, it is a tool. My example in years prior to this, in terms of the success of a tax abatement approval, is similar to going to Art Van, and you buy your furniture now, you start paying on it in eighteen months, but eventually, you're going to get all of your money. And so it's almost like a give-now, and you pay on the back end. So we're not giving it up, the companies are still paying their property taxes, and so in general, I would normally, most likely, come to this podium to support a tax abatement for any company, including RPT, again, because it has been a successful business tool, retention tool, marketing tool, for the city.
Thank you. Are there any other members here today that'd like to speak to this? Please come forward. Otherwise, the public hearing is closed. Counsel? Anything else? Want to motion?
I want to know if he was coming back to the mic.
Did you have some more to add?
No, no, if you have any other questions or anything.
Okay. It's a pleasure.
I move that we approve the Tax Abatement Act for Act 328, 1998, for RPT Realty. For the personal property tax.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the property tax exemption under Public Act 328 for Oakland Commons. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, I would also like to say that the delay in making the motion has nothing to do with the value of the effort that the petitioner is putting into the city of Southfield.
All right, thank you. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just going to pull up the other... Our next project, we brought this forward on August 12 as well, is for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district for the former Tower 14 property, which is at 21700 Northwestern Highway. We're seeking to establish a district around the property for the first public hearing, and then the second public hearing would be to put their request for a PA 210 into the district for five years. So Doug Noble is here for a short presentation, so I'd like him to introduce himself.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Doug Noble, address 1146 Henrietta, Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. Sorry, I'm a little nervous with the public speaking, but I'll go through this. So we gave the presentation a couple of weeks ago about our plans for Tower 14 as it's being rebranded, the former Hap Building, which is in close proximity to the old Northland Mall. But first, just a quick background on Foster Financial. I'm a partner, my business partner Brad Foster, the founder of the company, couldn't be here. And we are a real estate development company. He's 27, I'm 34. We first, we did our first deal together in 2016. We bought an empty building in Gross Point, redeveloped it, moved a title company in, and then our first major acquisition was in the city of Southfield. The building in the presentation is Central Park Plaza, which is right behind Evergreen in between Travelers and Town Center. When we acquired that building in September of 17, it was 50% occupied. It had a bad stigma in the neighborhood and in the real estate community as being kind of neglected property by previous owners. At one time, it went into foreclosure. So we acquired it. We convinced a federal government branch to relocate from downtown Detroit to Southfield, and they ironically do drug monitoring. So that was a big win for us after closing. We've successfully leased that property up to 92%. So we're looking for our next project. In January of this year, we acquired Loser Center, which is at The Lodge and Loser, right across the street from the old federal mogul headquarters. When we acquired that building, it was owned by another out-of-state owner, guy out of California, had one working elevator, old building systems. So we've deployed significant capital, you know, bringing the building back to life, leasing the property up. When we bought it in January, it was 40% occupied, it's now at 68%. Part of what makes us special besides kind of our age is we have our own construction company. So we work directly with the tenants and the companies. They don't specialize in understanding how much a construction budget to build an office is. We handle all of that. So getting into Tower 14. Tower 14, as you know, used to be the Hap corporate back office. So it was primarily used as a call center, accounting, they had some physicians on site. They unfortunately relocated with their 1,200 jobs to Troy after Shore Mortgage left their building. So we got into discussions with the owner, who is down in Florida, and we came to an agreement and bought the building. It's currently 9% occupied. So this property needs significant work to bring it back to life. Like the earlier presentation, Tower 14 really is the first experience of the city of Southfield that I believe you see as you're coming down the lodge. It has an outstanding attraction to some kind of branding for a corporate user, and we think there's a lot of opportunity. However, the previous owner has significant deferred maintenance. So the plan we put in place is roughly a $5 million project, and it includes, I think it's a couple of slides. It's a $5 million project. It primarily includes a brand-new lobby, brand-new elevator systems, all LED panels or LED light fixtures, significant capital improvements to the exterior of the building. And we hope to basically bring the building back to life, that we can convince a nonprofit government agency, Fortune 500 company, to reestablish their presence in the building. So that's a general idea of what we have planned. We put together the presentation, which outlines our timeline and the specific projects that we intend to do over the next five years.
So we have, so we'll go through, we'll start with item D first, the first public hearing.
Establishing the district.
To establish the district. So we'll open up the public hearing to establish the commercial rehabilitation district for this initiative. Anyone that would like to speak to the matter, please again, just give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I am normally not in favor of these types of deals that the city make. But for this one here, I could be in support, only because I have been in the Hap Building on numerous occasions for many years. I have some friends that have offices in there, and you are absolutely correct. The building went down considerably. The only thing that I would like to encourage you to do, and you would be making a statement in the city of Southfield, you would become a model for other developers to follow, and that is to go a little bit further than just making it green with LED lights and wrapping the pipes and, you know, energy-efficient AC if you're going to replace that. Go a little bit further and make your building LEED certified. You know, there's four different levels of certification when it comes to LEED. You've got just your normal certification that would get you in the door, you have silver, gold, and platinum. I would suggest that you go a little bit further. It would be nice. It would show that you're more committed than the average developer. It would show that you want to set a standard and not just have one foot in the door and one foot out of the door and do just the bare minimum. So that's just a thought. But I'm really happy that that building is going to get some TLC. You could also make the residents happy if you were to consider buying Sapphire Apartments, which is right across the street. You've got employees that you're going to be bringing over here if you purchase Sapphire, which is really a slum place. And we've got seniors and kids living in substandard apartments, which is right across the street. And bring that back up to what it used to be, wow, you would be like a super-duper hero type of a developer. And then the second thing you might want to consider buying is Northland. I'm sure you could do something better with office and maybe a state-of-the-art city hall, because I've talked about that before, using your property to build a state-of-the-art city hall and a police station. But just so you'll know, we're probably not going to have a police station over there because I haven't seen any cars over there, and there's no activity in our police department. So are we going to have a police department to service the people on the east side?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fercassi.
I move that the Economic Development Initiative be approved.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the Economic Development Initiative under PA 210.
To establish the district.
To establish, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. All right, for the commercial rehabilitation district. Any other comments or questions for council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And the young man did a great job in his presentation.
Very nice. Very nice.
You didn't seem nervous at all.
Yeah, you did good. You did good. It was a great task. So the next public hearing again is to put the project in the district. And again, the city will continue to collect the taxes that are generated from the building, which is approximately $53,000 a year. And then when the application expires, then the property will go back up to its current excess value, and then we'll continue to collect taxes.
Correct. Okay, very good. So we'll open the public hearing up on this matter. Anyone that would like to speak to the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for this initiative, please come forward.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. As I was saying, because three minutes come so quick, I'm glad that you're doing that, but we might need to be concerned about what they refer to as the east side of the city of Southfield. You know, normally, I see a lot of things because I drive around the city to make it a point to see. I've had several residents calling me, inquiring about the fact that they don't see a lot of movement or really anything going on with the police station over there. I know one time before, maybe two or three years ago, we talked about moving that police station to maybe the Kennedy Center, and there was some security concerns in terms of houses being closed and the sound and all of that. So you might want to inquire as to whether or not we're going to have what we normally refer to as a downtown police station. Now, let's just say hypothetically, we don't have that police station downtown. No resident over there on the east side of Southfield is going to have that quick and easy access to a police officer. And if you guys are thinking about it, if you do it, it's going to be a disservice to all of the residents in the city of Southfield. So I'm in favor, but you also need to be concerned about the police coverage in that area. If we lose the downtown station over there, it's going to be really sad. So maybe I'm missing something, maybe there's people not there when myself and others have driven by there. But why don't you tell the developer what we're going to do about the police station over there? Or if you've thought about it, or if you're thinking about it, and it would be a good idea to take your Northland property and build a state-of-the-art police station for that side of town over there, which is near Greenfield and Northland and Sapphire Apartments and Rutland and OCC. I'm sure they want some police coverage over there. And I'm going to yield a couple of seconds, 20 or so. Thank you.
If there's anyone else that'd like to speak to this particular matter, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel?
I'd like to just ask a question of the petitioner. Your presentation showed a lot of work done on the inside. Do you intend to do anything to the outside to make it more attractive? As you said, as people go up Northwestern Highway, that's one of the first buildings that they see.
Yeah. Yeah, I, we've kind of had like preliminary discussions about things to do from the exterior. And one of the two little projects that will be kicking off, one is there's old kind of like vertical white blinds that are left behind from Hap. And at night, when there's lights left on for emergency lighting, you can kind of see the old blinds. So we're going to pull those down and install just like a translucent roller shade, which I think will just give it like a better appearance from the road. The other thing is the overhang awning in the front lobby is dated, and we've talked about as part of the lobby renovation, modernizing that to create kind of like an old theater feel with special light bulbs and new lettering for Tower 14. A lot of people don't even know the name of the building. They call it Charnosa, they call it the former Hap Building, and so we really want to rebrand it as Tower 14.
Right. Yeah, because when you bring people in to populate the building, they're going to see all the work that you've done on the inside. But as people are driving by, they see the outside of the building, and that also attracts people to things that are going on in Southfield.
Yeah.
So.
Agreed.
And I appreciate the fact that you're willing to invest in Southfield for that reason.
Absolutely.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the application from Foster Financial for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate. Are there any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. It's been approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we're moving to our communications portion of the meeting. And I just, I don't want to read the whole statement once again, but it's just really been bothering me, the fact of some folks that have been coming to the lectern that have really been taking personal attacks on people. And I wanted just to be clear that the rules and procedures for all speakers, and I'll just read this portion of it before we get started, that no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official. That is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs in his or her duties. So again, the communications portion in my assessment really tends to deal with more of when there are concerns that need to be heard, that's what we're here for. So we want to hear the concerns. This statement is not about trying to stop anyone from saying things that are, that they have concerns about, but it's not a time to come in and to attack people that are trying to do the best job that they can do. So I think that we just need to be conscious of that and be the city that we claim to be all the time. So I just wanted to just say that before we got started today. All right, so our first request for recognition is Ms. Pamela Gerald.
Well, I think I've given my address and phone number quite a bit tonight. I just wanted to say that several days ago, I went to my P.O. box to get my mail, and I was tickled, like peach or salmon, because I'm wearing that color tonight, that I got a certified letter that cost $6.85, and it came from the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. So I'd like to read this letter that I got. Dear Ms. Gerald, your attention is called to the fact that the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force Incorporated and its special executive board meeting on July 3rd adopted a resolution which states as follows, "Reserve that Pamela Gerald is hereby cited to appear at a special meeting for trial to show cause why she should not be expelled from the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force on the following charge and specifications. I let it be known that I only joined the second time to vote for Sharon Kelly Persons, who was running for president, and I withdrew my membership that same night on August the 11th." So this letter is really out of order because I'm not even a member. So the charge is conduct tending to injure the good name of the Martin Luther King Task Force. You know, I ran for chair of the Michigan Democratic Party Black Caucus, and I only went and voted at that particular caucus because I was a candidate there. I got accused, and I like Ms. Barbara Tally, but I was not happy about the fact that she accused me of passing out some flyers at the convention when I was gone by 10 o'clock. And I think she watches these meetings, she knows who passed out that literature, and she knows that that's not my style. I'm not a flyer person. I use my intellect, and I use my mouth, and I use this platform here because residents watch the meeting, or I take it to the news. And to be accused of doing something that I didn't do, I'm just really appalled about it. So I just want to make that very clear, that I withdrew my membership in 2016 because I was not going to have an organization tell me how to advocate, how to and how not to speak up for the residents that I love in a city that I have a relationship with for 36 years. I'm not going to do it. This is why I'm not a member. So I just want to show you guys, this is the letter here, and this is what I think about the letter. I have no intentions on showing up because I'm not a member, and I would appreciate quite kindly if none of you guys would send me another letter. And to make matters worse, and to top it off, guess who the letter came from? My deputy city administrator, John Mishcrena, who's the recording secretary.
Your time is up, thank you. Our next request for recognition is Gerard Mullin.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, once upon a time, a time not that long ago, there once was a city council, a city council that used to post, post their legal notices for their public hearings on their city's legal notice bulletin board, just outside their chambers' doors. Once upon a time, a time not long ago. Sad to say, Mr. Chairman, that council is this council. That time was a time, a time not that long ago. Tonight, Mr. Chairman, I have a question that I'd like to ask this council, the Southfield City Council.
Through the chair.
Why are councils' legal notices for public hearings today never, never, not ever, never, ever posted by this city council on this city's legal notice bulletin board located here, here, at City Hall? And yet, Mr. Council, Mr. Chairman, the folks here on this city council, on this Southfield City Council, have no problem posting their individual photos of theirselves in the hallway across from the legal notice bulletin board. Why? Why, Mr. Chairman? Why does this council post their individual portraits of theirselves, but not their legal notices? Why? If you folks can't do a simple, routine administrative detail like posting your legal notices for your public hearings on the legal notice bulletin board, how do you folks here ever, ever expect to do something really big? Big and difficult, like Northland, and do it correctly? The answer is this. You can't. No way, nada. As this council has demonstrated time and time again. For example, just drive by Northland on any given day, and you will see what I mean. Or just check out the city swamp, that is, the eight-acre parking lot just across the street from City Hall. The solution to this problem is this. We need a change. A complete change. A total makeover of this council. A change beginning this November, November the 5th, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Sonia Simpson Gardner. Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I'm here again tonight to express some concerns that I have. Next month, it will be exactly one year since I stood in solidarity with about sixty residents, and twenty of whom were association presidents regarding the subject tank issue. From that day to present, there's really been no correspondence or communication on what the city intends to do about this oversight and failure to enforce this ordinance. I have gone month after month at this podium, every Monday, virtually every Monday, to express this with no concern. Or I should say, without regard. In July, I believe it was the director of code enforcement, who just recently earned her PhD, congrats to that, who indicated that she had reached out to various municipalities and discovered that of all the municipalities dealing with Southfield, in subject tank Southfield, had the absolute worst letter being sent to its residents, all of which I brought to your attention nearly one year ago. The letter forces residents to connect to the city sewer within thirty days. Many of these lots are so large, it takes us more than thirty days to find a landscaper to do our yard with certainty. How can we be forced hundreds of residents to all pool to the same companies to get inspections all at the same time within thirty days? I am shocked that with the level of expertise and intellect with this collective body that no one even mentioned, well, can we extend that to a hundred and twenty days? I've seen you give extensions for ice, sex doll brothels, weed banks, the whole works. But for the residents, you've done nothing. Who among you today can actually give the authority to consider extending that thirty day to a hundred and twenty days? That's a very simple thing to do, to show the residents that you care about and oversight that this city is guilty of. I agree with a lot of the residents here in regards to the lapse in transparency. I noticed last month or last week that the city mentioned that it visited Holland, Michigan in regards to carriage houses before it actually had spoken to the residents who live in the place you planned to build them. That's not how you should want to do business. You should think more of your residents. It should be us first. We elected you to put us first, to put our needs first, to think of us first. And it seems like even with the communications, we come last. Who among you are brave enough to actually address that concern, I asked? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Keith Harris.
How you guys doing today? All Racing Life Matter, P.O. Box 2679. Zip code, I mean, address, 48037, zip code. We're talking about tearing down schools in order to build new housing and things of that nature. If you look on your map that you put out, all the pink is apartments and condos. Our community agrees so much with you, Don Fakowski. We agree, we don't need any more housing. What we need is new schools. When was the last time this city invested into their school system? When the last time we built a public school from the ground up? I don't think neither one of you can mention it. We have the ragliest schools. I'm talking to the residents every day on how poor and tacky our schools are. We sent to build more housing, but we have no schools. We should have, in the past thirty years, we should have built at least four new schools by now. I'm talking about two elementaries and at least two junior highs, and a new high school. But we invest in our money into Northland, we invest in our money into other investments, but we're not investing the taxpayers' money into the school system. Instead of building school condos on these lots, let's tear the schools down and put a couple of new public school systems up. I mean, when you build new schools, you bring new residents. It's the school system that brings in the young people, the young people, not new homes. Now, as far as bringing sex doll brothels and weed, and then you're gonna mix all of that with the old people, I mean, that might sound good to a bunch of freaky old people. But you cannot, that does not work for us young folks. You're gonna bring, you know, I mean, come on, you're gonna build a hotel, and you're gonna give 'em weed, and then you're gonna have a sex forum. Come on, where's the Viagra to go with it for the old fellas? Let's invest our time and money right and develop a new school system. Let's put together a new school system. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is John Holloman. Our next request for recognition is Perle Burgos.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Perle Lilidell Burgos. I live at 23882 Sargent Avenue, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. And I'm here tonight to speak on lighting systems that's in the church's parking lot. They have newly installed, okay? Estimated brightness, my estimate is about twenty thousand plus lumens. That means if you look at these lighting, they blind you. I have pictures, we have email code enforcement. It's all started back in June, and it is still going on. When I walk out on my deck, you look at these lights, they blind you. You can't look that way. It's a nuisance. My rental property next door, they have two little twin girls. It lights up their bedroom window. I mean, I don't know who approved this, or what code they have, but these lightings were not part of the previous lighting, which I think there's some confusion there, 'cause they were not there. They started, they were installed this summer. And they are nuisance, they need to be removed. I have not seen any code that was approved or anything to install these lights. I've emailed, my husband emailed, and it's still going on. Now, it's supposed to be in court. In the meantime, you walk out on my deck, my renters walk out, the lights are still on, they come on at night. There is no reason why these lights are there. You have the parking lots. If they want some kind of lighting for the counseling center, all they have to do is put on a motion sensor. That's what I have on my front porch. You know, so I want a resolution to it, I want it to be resolved because they do hurt your eyes, and they are nuisance. And I want it resolved as soon as possible. Thank you. I have pictures, if anybody wants to see, I could email the council people also, if they want to see. You can pass these around.
Mr. Fakowski. Mr. Braywell.
I think, you know, we have an ordinance of something that deals with light pollution. And so, I'm just trying to figure why they, why this hasn't been addressed, because we do have, I looked at this for another neighborhood several years ago, something that deals with light pollution. So, um, I'll get your address and contact info and try to see what's happening here.
Yes, do they have to, shouldn't these lighting be approved? The parking lot lighting were approved, but these are newly installed, and they are so bright. It's really, really hurt your eyes. I don't see how anybody can install those lights.
We are ruled against light pollution, so that's what it is, it's a category in the lighting profession.
It's been going on since June. We've been emailing code enforcement.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
We're looking to, yes, Mr. Fakowski.
I was just talking to Myron. They have these shades, we were down at one of the conferences, and they can shade these things like a ball field, or there's no light, it goes off the sight. And I was wondering if they can look at that and shield them so they don't, you know. Once we seen Myron, remember that?
Right.
Yeah, you could go do a ball field, and there's no lights that go out of it.
Yeah, it's like they're aiming right, straight. They're not face down or anything, and I think they were put on illegally.
Yeah, thank you. We'll look at it.
We'll take a look at it, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
Hello again, council, mayor, clerk, administrator. My name is Harold Hill, 76163, Southfield, Michigan. Oh, that's a P.O. box, I'm sorry. Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I'm here today to talk about transparency. And transparency is not something that is usually a problem, especially when it comes down to the written word, when it comes down to our agendas. But I was at a meeting last week, and I looked at the agenda, and it said, "Presentation and discussion regarding proposed text amendments." Now, I'll read it again. It said, "Presentation and discussions regarding proposed text amendments." Didn't know what that meant, but I sat through that. And when we started, it was about marijuana, how far away it would be, this, that, and the other. But to me, that wasn't very transparent. It was misleading somewhat, because I didn't know what it was talking about. So, I looked at someone else's agenda to make sure I had the right agenda. And usually, that doesn't happen, you get the right information. But I think we need to be a little more transparent when we come talking about subjects, even if it's not a popular subject. You know, we know people voted for it, but they should be able to talk about it in a notable manner, so that we know exactly what's going on. Because when I looked at the paper and found out that August the 5th, Northland was possibly sold, and it may be wrong, but it said it's possibly sold, or eighty percent of it should be sold if X, Y, and Z are done, I said, wow, is that what that meeting was about? Because I thought Southfield, along with other cities like Royal Oak and Troy, had opted out. So, I just wanna see transparency. We can go with whatever, you know, people want. And I've talked to people, and this is something that we need to do a little more work on. Thank you. Transparency is important. Thanks. Have a good one.
Our next request for recognition is Stephanie English.
You can go ahead.
Stephanie English, 28735 San Carlos, 48076. This is an excerpt from a letter that I addressed to Mr. Baron, our current chief of police, that all of the other administrators were copied in on. "I am a dedicated Southfield resident who is assertively challenging the integrity and honesty of the police chief's selection process. I have been disciplined in bringing correct facts and checked facts forward. The photos attached here indicate that you have a non-expungable criminal file for an offense that took place in Virginia. Except for your court file, which I have submitted a FOIA for, these records were easy to obtain. The Hampton, Virginia Police Department provided me the highest level of assistance in providing me a copy of your arraignment summons, which is still physically held in their records department. There is a question on the city of Southfield application form. Have you ever been arrested or convicted for any offense other than a minor traffic violation? And there's two boxes to check yes or no. At the last council meeting, I asked, what was your answer? If you answered no, then you lied. If you answered yes, you would be disqualified due to the fact that a police chief for our city should have an impeccable background history. I was able to run a background check on you. I suspect that, I have been suspicious and suspect the city administrator hasn't run one on you. If he did, this criminal misdemeanor would have popped up immediately. You do have another traffic citation on your background record that you simply paid fines for. However, a citation violation is not a criminal offense. Misdemeanors and felonies are, and they are part of any permanent criminal file. The police chief represents the highest level of integrity and honesty. Our city expects this from our entire police department. If we don't hire officers with any criminal backgrounds, their leader should not have one either. Again, I asked at the last meeting about the answer. I did receive through the FOIA request a copy of your original application when you applied for the police chief's selection, or, excuse me, position, and you answered no on your application. Doing something negative in our past is life. It's not the crime, but the cover-up or lying that counts."
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
I detest the attempt at character assassination of our new-
These aren't assassinations, these are facts and pictures.
Of our new police chief.
These are facts.
And the rules that we have established about-
You can't bully me.
What you can talk and what you can't do. I think they're being violated right now, and I think that it should be stopped.
This is not fair, Myron Frazier, you can't bully me from the pulpit. I have not done anything wrong.
The reason I read that portion before the meeting was for this very reason, because I agree with Mr. Frazier.
Then we need, but I have tried to communicate with you all offline, I have not been able to. And this is a public forum. You've taken my time, I've done it the right-
You've taken my time, I've done it the right way. You have not addressed me at all. I have done this properly through FOIA requests, getting records from another state, court systems from another state. You're killing the messenger versus the information. I'm very careful, and I haven't been proven wrong on anything I've presented.
All the things that you're talking about is character assassination because your candidate didn't get selected.
Facts are facts.
That's it.
Facts are facts. You have a Southfield standard and you're lowering the standard and you're killing me as the messenger.
We have an officer, we have an officer in the, in the on-premise-
Really? Have I been, have I been disso-?
Your time is up, your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Our next request for recognition is Hassan Jawad.
Good evening, Hassan Jawad, two five two one two, Evergreen Road, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero seven five. Good evening. Uh, last council meeting, I expressed my concern over the decision by council to authorize negotiations to enter into an LOI with BezTech Properties to develop the Ever Center site with apartments by bypassing the RFP process. Since then, I've heard from some of the members of council, but unfortunately not all of you. Once again, I want to stress better communication and transparency that's needed between city council, our residents, and business community. Considering this is one of the most important properties in the city, I once again request city council reconsider its decision regarding the Ever Center site and work with the residents, businesses, and our educational institutions towards a plan that truly benefits the city and not just the developer. After all, after all, this is our city. And once again, I stress better communication and transparency. We have taken our two most important properties in the city, and the best we could come up with is a pot farm and apartment complex. And I think we can do much better than that. This is not the Southfield standard that I am used to and that I have experienced in the past. And once again, I stress better communication and transparency. Marijuana and apartments bring no value to our city. And I extended invitation to all of you, especially those of you that have not reached out to me yet, to further discuss the future of our city as it pertains to the Ever Center site. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next request for recognition is Richard Meltzer.
Richard Meltzer, two oh eight five oh, Winkin, Southfield. I'm here again to support Stephanie English and Officer Brian Bassett and to protest what appears to be a major deception on the part of the city administration's appointment of the new police chief. First, I'll repeat the one thing I know for sure, since I was in attendance. Officer Bassett excelled during the public interviews. For him to receive the lowest grade is a clear indication that the process was rigged. His scores on all the other dimensions of the attribute matrix exceeded those of the newly named chief. Therefore, the only way for Officer Bassett to mathematically lose was to seriously downgrade his presentation score in order to lower his overall average grade. Presumably, the purpose of the grading matrix was to create the charade that the selection process was objective, and there are other issues. Officer Bassett is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, Mr. Baron is not. He did not claim that credential on his resume, so how did it get included on the recommendation letter sent to council? Mr. Baron apparently failed to indicate a past criminal conviction on his initial Southfield employment application, and typically that's a dismissible offense. And it appears small differences in command experience-
Mr. President, I repeat my, I repeat my statement that, uh- We have a copy of the application. Our police chief passed an FBI background check, so with a clean reputation. So what you're saying is nothing more than character assassination? And I ask that they, you stop. I'm glad you were not on the Watergate Commission. I, I ask that you, you stop. I'm sure President Nixon would have fulfilled his term.
All right, sir, your time, your time is up.
Should I finish and just skip that part?
Your time, your time is up, sir.
Well, my time's not up. Are you, are you excusing me?
Yes, I am.
I can't even finish the other part.
No. We're gonna go back to our rules.
You know, when you listen to all the deficiencies that citizens report, you all have a problem.
Mr. Zorn, do you mind just kind of just going through the process we went through one more time for everybody? Because this is just getting ridiculous that people are coming up here with this garbage. And we, we, I just want to, I want everybody to know whatever, what, what everybody had to go through and Elvin is in particular had to get through.
Number one, we do have a background check and there, the criminal, there was nothing in, in the background track criminally. The background check is clean. Uh, council will recall that this is probably one of the most extensive public participation searches that we ran. We advertised, um, the position. We had an outstanding pool of applicants. Uh, council president and pro tem were involved in this election, as well as our district judge, the president of the Police Officers Association Union, the superintendent of schools, myself, my fire chief, my deputy city administrator, the city attorney, and the psych, uh, psychologist that the, uh, city uses. All candidates went through that oral interview. The candidates also went through an, an Emco testing process, which is a testing process that the city of, of Southfield uses for its police department. And then there was a public interview held in this room. Um, the scoring, um, has been made available. Uh, Chief Baron was the top scorer in that process. I'm gonna remind people that this is my appointment, uh, subject to council's approval. Um, I believe we ran one of the most transparent and open processes, and I'm very pleased with the result and, and the recommendation. You know, it is always difficult for an organization to recognize that some changes are necessary. And this position opening provided that opportunity. And we have that candidate, I believe, who will carry this city forward and make the changes that are necessary. The, um, you know, we now have a traffic, uh, we have greater presence in our traffic enforcement than we've ever had. All, all of the applicants made reference that that was one of the top priorities. But I'd like to leave it at that. This, the last few weeks with some of these things have been, you know, very, uh, challenging. And, and I agree that they come down to character assassinate, assassinations. So, um, I'd like to keep the community focused on the positive in moving forward. The decision has been made.
Thank you.
And there's simply no truth to some of these things.
So again, and again, I'll just read this one little sentence once again, that no speaker's gonna come here and make personal attacks against any officer, employee, city council member, elected official, um, in this city. So we're not gonna have it anymore. So anybody's coming up here with this, we, it's, we're done with it. We did the process, we were transparent as we've ever been in any type of process like this. And, um, we have done our due diligence, uh, just as Mr. Frazier said. We've all, just like all of us up here have been through FBI checks and everything like that. Um, things have already been made clear. Uh, and this is, this was the selection of our administrator. And we need to support this and move forward with the city instead of all this bickering about nothing. Nathan Page is our next report for recognition.
I'm, uh, I'm Nathan Page. I live at twenty-eight, three oh seven Everett. Shoot, you probably should have saved that speech till after me. Um, but, uh, for starters, uh, you guys, uh, my neighborhood's being repaved. So thank you if you guys had any involvement with it. So it's, it's not all negative up here. I, uh, I've expressed, uh, I was here a couple of weeks ago and I'm back with a similar issue again tonight. Um, I guess I'd like to clarify that, um, I'm not unhappy with you. Excuse me, like I said last week, I met you, you seem like a nice guy. Um, they offered you a job, you took it, I don't blame you for that. Um, I, I'm upset or concerned with, uh, the selection. And, and I think there's a difference between, and, uh, I, I understand, uh, you guys are anti, uh, character assassination. That's not my intent. I hope you don't see it that way. I'm also not, uh, uh, character assassination speeches aside, which I don't, I don't argue with that, not that comfortable with how comfortable you guys are scolding people after the meeting two weeks ago, um, in the crowd, uh, as being elected officials and us being residents. But I'll just leave that there. I think the word transparent gets used a lot and sometimes overused. Not to say, uh, nothing's transparent, but I think there are a lot of questions that haven't been answered about tran, uh, in the name of transparency. You've addressed a couple, I'm not gonna beat it on some points. I'd really be curious why the June third, uh, city council meeting and the external, uh, interview, um, that was in this chambers, uh, is not on YouTube from the, uh, the city's, uh, posted from the city's multimedia page. It was put up a couple of weeks ago, I believe, stayed up for a day or two, and then was pulled down. And in an email, I said it was, uh, said it was told to be taken down by administration. If that meeting's not online, that, to me, questions transparency for people that weren't able to be here to be able to see it. I'm also concerned about the, uh, what I would call lack of transparency of the appointment of the chief being done during a clo, uh, a, a study session, not televised and voted on as a rule ten, um, immediately when, as I stated a couple of weeks ago, some council members wanted to get more information. You made your decision, that's fine. I just don't know if that was the best decision. A few weeks ago, Mr. Zorn, you said, um-
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next request for recognition is Greg Keeler.
Mr. Chairman, Molly's coming up. I kind of think that we ought to expand that, uh, item that's right below your, when they come before us, say, and talk about our employees. I don't think it's fair. The chief is here, I respect him. The administrator made the call, we confirmed it, the case is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you.
I agree.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. I would like to thank you for the handicapped parking spots being repainted and everything else. The ones around City Hall are very spacious and nice. You can get out, get in and get out on both sides of the vehicle. Now the ones on telegraph, now you gotta get out on the hill. So what sense does it make to make a handicapped person have to get out and then climb up the hill? Cause it's unlevel work. It's the same as being here. When I seen Latina last week come up here, as she came here, sh- shouldn't this have been a table? Like you have when we have our property tax questions? We come in here, there's a table here. People that are handicapped can sit down at that table. Couldn't she have sat her walker there? And if you've never been in that type of situation, you don't know what's going on in a person's mind and how disruptive it is to them to be in a situation like this. You may think this is simple and easy to get here, but no, it's not. If you had a table here, this would be further so if somebody came here with a walker and/or a wheelchair, could attend one of your meetings? If you're gonna have this meeting in September sixteenth? If somebody is handicapped or in a wheelchair, can they talk? Are they accessible to this building? I mean, I'm just telling you just how badly you are doing on your ADA appliance. You have these reserved seats, do you have any space here for handicaps to sit in this audience? Do you have any places they need to stick their legs out? Or they can't bend their legs up to sit in that area? Are you thinking about all the residents? Handicapped people are residents too. You have three handicapped people that come to this meeting regularly, and you may have more that come here and that you don't even know about. So I would implore you to please have next time here a table. So if she has a sitter cane there, she can sit her cane there. If somebody comes in here with a wheelchair, they can come in here with a wheelchair. Somebody comes with a walker, they can come with a walker. That this is truly an accessible meeting. And I think on the one on September sixteenth, you're gonna have a lot of people here who's gonna be excluded, handicapped.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Cornelius Mormon. Our next request-
Mr. Cruz, let me-
Mr. Breyer.
Uh, Mr. Keeler, uh, that, just to, to give you, uh, an update on a couple of things. Uh, the city is initiating a comprehensive need assessment for all our buildings, and that will be part of it as far as ADA. And that's, that's just on a, on a going forward basis. That's something that we've been pushing for the last two to three years all of, and so we finally got it in the budget this year for all our buildings. And I think if we can address the issue, um, next week on, on going forward basis, and the clerk has a little item down here if you need, if you need assistance. Uh, but I think we will obviously deal with the clerk, make sure there's something here for, for the individuals who have, who have special needs in that particular case. But I just want to give you an update. Obviously, all our buildings are old and, but the city is spending approximately two hundred some thousand, uh, we may be not that much, to look at all our buildings, look at all our buildings, and just to make sure they, they are, um, accessible. They're as modern as they possibly can be. Um, and I, we definitely appreciate you bringing this to our attention. And I, and I'd say that only to, to appreciate you bringing to my, our attention, and, but we are, we'll be addressing those issues.
The biggest reason why, I already knew what you said because me and somebody else have had that conversation. And they had brought it up that the building is not ADA compliant because they have looked around and seen that. So I know that. So I never really pushed the issue a whole lot. Otherwise, I would push the issue that this building should be condemned and shut down because you don't have it where you can bring in handicapped people. And in the wintertime, you had all the yellow tape around it and everything else, and all the crooked and broken stones and everything else. Handicapped person can't get here. My issue was the tape.
We, it'll be here next week.
I, I, I watched that last week.
Okay.
That upset me that, you know, that I come here to another meeting and there's a, in this room, and there's a table for people that are handicapped to sit at. You just, you, you don't understand how comfortable that will make somebody. And I, I appreciate the fact, Mr. Cruz, you let us speak a little bit longer.
Sure.
You know, that was very appreciated.
That's, it's a very important point, absolutely. So we appreciate your concern and, uh, we'll, we'll be taking care of that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Um, our next request for recognition is Tina Marie Poole.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council leadership and Mayor Seiver. My name is Tina Marie Poole. I reside at P.O. Box or P.O. Box twenty-four eleven. I'm here this evening to advocate on behalf of our residents. As I've been in the community engaging with our residents, I've found that they have a few concerns. I understand that we have a new reporting tool, which is awesome, I think, and it's great for those who are technologically savvy. However, as you know, Southfield is comprised of over seventy thousand residents. Of that seventy thousand, there is approximately seventeen percent that are aged sixty-five and over, which equates to approximately- which equates to approximately twelve thousand residents who probably will not be utilizing the reporting tool. Thank goodness for COSA, who will be partnering with Southfield A&amp;T and providing training for our seniors. In addition, there are some people who just want the privilege and the option of speaking to an individual regarding their concerns for the purpose of accountability. This evening, I have two concerns for your consideration and response, please. I, as I was in the community, I spoke with a Mr. and Mrs. Hudson, I'm giving their name by permission, who resides on Addison, right off of Lathrop and ten mile Southfield area. They are new Southfield homeowners and they express their great concern and disappointment for feelings of neglect regarding constant backups, the issues with plumbing and then an enormous amount of the presence of mosquitoes. They mentioned that they have reached out to the city several times with no response. Secondly, in conversation with residents who reside on Stratford and Lathrop, on one side of the street, a very short street, there's approximately ten to twelve homes there. And on the opposite side is city property that is, that is bushes, trees, weeds, et cetera. They're saying that the property has not been maintained, pruned or managed for the entire summer. They're not just concerned with aesthetic purposes, but they're also concerned with their safety. And again, they're saying that they've reached out to no avail. I understand that perhaps this is the first time you guys are hearing this and you have to do your due diligence. My question is, what is the timeline and turnaround for response to citizens? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Joe Person.
Uh, Joseph Person, first of all, I want to say hello, Mayor, Board President, City Administrator and the City Clerk, oh, and our distinguished police chief. Listen, folks, I'm going to talk about two things. I'm going to take the first part and deal with this nonsense that you keep coming to attack this man. The problem I have with this is that I do not, if you take a poll of all black women in this city that are over the age of twenty-five, no, I'm going to go eighteen to ninety-five and say would they like another black woman to come in and attack another black man? Y'all all know this, whether it's any of the city councilwomen or the city clerk or any of the black women out here or the black women in this city, you know, we don't go for that. So to attack this man that the city administrator chose, he won, let it go, let's move on. And I, I just want to thank you, Police Chief, and welcome to Southfield if nobody else has told you that. Um, the second thing I want to talk about with the permission of Pam Gerald. I don't agree with everything with Pam Gerald, but this issue with the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force, I'm a parliamentarian. In order to be one, you got to get one of these pens. We have the vice, we have the president, vice president, treasurer and myself are all registered members with the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. The process of how they did this to Ms. Gerald was wrong. The way that it's supposed to happen, page six fifty-six to six fifty-nine. First of all, somebody brings a charge against Ms. Gerald, they bring a charge against her. They form a committee of five people that are elected by secret ballot or that are appointed by the president with, with the, with the approval of the executive board. They investigate this privately and confidential. They come back with the information and then they decide to have a trial. You cannot do this in the process the way that they did it. They put the cart before the horse. The next thing is, when you have a deputy city administrator that is the secretary, it has an appearance of what happened. And I know him, I know that he doesn't, he wouldn't be a party to something that he doesn't understand. So I'm going to give him benefit of the doubt that he doesn't understand this. But you cannot do things, you have to do things right. On this particular situation, they were wrong. They need to rethink this and go back and talk to all of those parliamentarians that they have that are members of the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Louis Williams.
Louis Williams, good evening.
Good evening.
I continue to be concerned about the plan for a marijuana business operating at Northland Medical Marijuana. I continue to believe it is not in our community's best interest to have a marijuana business operating in our community, medical or otherwise. And I ask the question, if it's such a good idea, why aren't some of the other communities clamoring to have it come to their communities? I say, let them go to the other communities and open up there. I don't think it's in, as I said, I don't think it's in our best interest to have a marijuana business here, medical or otherwise. I urge the city council to vote no on there being a marijuana business located here. I feel it would be detrimental to our community. And we don't need it. Again, let them take it to some other community. I have another comment. I want to welcome Chief Barron as the Southfield Police Chief. I feel that based on his credentials and his performance, he has shown that he is well qualified to serve as our police chief. He was selected by the city administrator and appointed by the city council. And he's doing the job. And I encourage the residents to support him and encourage him and let him know that we're expecting that he's going to do an outstanding job as our police chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Yolanda Haynes.
Yolanda Haynes, two four five zero one, cancel. I want to try to say this as quick as possible. Um, when I first got with the situation about the chief police, I was in support of Chief Bassett because I knew Chief Bassett. And when all the things came down, Chief Barron got the position. I trust you all to do what you're supposed to do with that. You all to make the decision. I respect that decision. I support Chief Barron. And I think that as a city and as a people, we should really move forward with, uh, moving on with who we have. This is the best person you all selected. The team of police have to do the same thing because you have to recognize, we work together. You know, things that are in the past are in the past and we need to leave them behind. I didn't come here to say that, but I'm just get tired of the whole saying the same things over and over. I was contacted by the same people to say, why don't you get up here and get on the list? I'm not doing stuff like that. This, that is, there's a professional way and a polite way to handle things and this is not the way. And I will never get with anybody, so don't call me, email me or send me anything else about supporting what you think should have happened. It's just like the Trump, Trump's the president. Whether you like him or not, he's here for whatever years he's got left. So you're going to keep whining and crying about it or you're going to move on? So we need to move on from that. You know, some things you're not going to like. There are decisions that you all have made in the past that I have not liked. But you know what? I respect the fact that you have the position. I don't have the position. You have the position. I have to respect your position and respect your decision. And I'm going to respect the people that are in leadership that are in charge. I didn't get a chance to publicly congratulate you and welcome you for being here. And I say congratulations and welcome. I was a bit disappointed you all didn't have a convocation because we need prayer when anybody comes into office here. I want to let you know, I'm praying for you and for your protection and for your leadership in this city because we need that with all that we got going on up in here, if you will. You know, there are a lot of things that we really need to work on and I think we need to learn to do that together. I was at the Jazz Fest and I think about maybe an hour into the Jazz Fest, there was this big boom. It was like a crash. It was a car accident. And it was right in front of Chipotle and right on Evergreen. Within minutes, there were police coming and there were police surrounding it. In the next few minutes, I know there were policemen guiding the people from walking across the street. I know you probably had something to do with that because that's your leadership. But all I know is those people were protected after that situation happened. And this is the type of things that we need in this city. Someone saw a need in leadership and they took care of it. And then you just talked about we're having traffic enforcement. That's real important because we got people thinking that they can continue to run lights and things around here. So those are immediate actions. We need to look at what's going on good, support that. You said one thing, that cops count and leadership matter. Leadership matters in all aspects in this city. And in the leadership with this city, anybody that gets up here repeatedly saying the same thing, that's called insanity. Okay? So think about that, you guys.
Thank you. All right, that is our communications portion of the meeting. Uh, we'll go to council. Yes, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, hi. I just want to say that, um, a couple of weeks or so ago, I think Sarah Havel came before us about the, uh, optimize and the water retention ponds. We have since had that cleared up and I just wanted to bring it full circle because that's some things that we forget to do is go back to the person that had the original question. Even though it was answered and resolved, um, the city went out, optimize was, um, they did have a ticket, they did fix the problem. And I believe the mayor went by the, the center the other week and sent us a text that the pond was dry. So that concern that you have, I want to say thank you for bringing it forward, but I also wanted to report back to you that we did take a look at it and resolve the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morse.
Yes, I just wanted to make a clarification. Uh, two weeks ago, to the residents that are, um, a part of the viewership. Um, two weeks ago, the Southfield Sun ran an article about, uh, a vote that the council had, um, regarding the Northland Medical Marijuana, um, proposal. And in the article, it stated that the council had voted, uh, six to one. Uh, and Councilman Fakasi was the no vote. Um, but I too voted no, uh, for the, um, uh, against that project. But I do want to say that although the article was originally written on the first page, they did make a correction and, but the correction, uh, was on the seventeenth page. So I just wanted, um, to state my vote again so that the residents would know how I felt about that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, good evening. I, uh, want to, you'll be getting something, um, uh, in writing from us. But, um, uh, the planning department, the library board, the, um, Friends of Southfield Public Art and the Public Art Commission will be doing a celebration of, um, the public art that has been installed in the last two years. It'll be, um, now that we have Moby Dick, uh, totally landscaped and running. It looks great as you drive by on Evergreen. Uh, last week, the irrigation was put in, uh, donated by Mark Dutton. Uh, Lavens Landscaping did the, uh, uh, the plantings and Barton Mallow did all the concrete work. Uh, so our, um, project, three years in the making is, uh, finally complete. And, uh, the invitation for, um, a, a public celebration, um, will be on September seventeenth, that's a Tuesday, September seventeenth, from four thirty to six P.M. Um, on, if the weather's permits on the plaza behind the library, otherwise in the library, uh, community room. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Zorn?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. The, uh, I will, uh, spin by the church a nine mile and I've sent a text to Code and Building Department about that. We will take a look at that in the evening, how they were installed. And it looks like from the photos, it looks like a pretty intense light. The, uh, I did share with council a draft response that I asked our purchasing agent to prepare in regards to the letters pertaining to the Ever Center development. I received that late Friday evening. I've not had a chance to speak with her regarding the letter. I would like to sit down and just go through each of the points, um, just to make sure that I fully understand all of the issues. That, uh, property sale was handled by purchasing. There was also a requirement in the entities that signed off that, that they not have communications with the elected officials and that. So, you know, there are a few pieces that, that we're still working our way through. But I would like the chance to sit down with her. Also, I want to remind when the complaint came up about Stratford, I think, I'm not sure of the, the property, but it was Stratford and Lathrop, the bushes and the trees. I think it might be Stratford Woods, but we'll take a look at that. But for our residents, we have implemented the C Click Fix. If you go to the city's website, where you can shoot a photo of these things and, and report these things for complaints. And hopefully it gets, it will get into a queue for repair or I's. That is the city of South, Southfield Code Enforcement. That number is two four eight seven nine six I's or thirty-nine thirty-seven. Again, that number is two four eight seven nine six thirty-nine thirty-seven. When you see those items, if something doesn't look right, call us and Code will let Public Works know or, uh, work with the homeowner to correct the situation. Want to comment just on the optimize situation. That process came, uh, started here. A letter was sent to the business owner. They were given an amount of time to repair it and the repair has taken. I know when we send out these letters, we typically give the business owner or the homeowner thirty days to make the repairs. We work with people. There's a constant line of communication that Code, um, works, you know, works to help resolve, uh, the problem or the concern at hand. Sometimes it's getting the business owner or the homeowner to understand what the issue is, how it's not in compliance. And then there were economics and life conditions. You can have a person who, and we've had, I hear these stories all the time. Well, my husband passed away. My nephew was supposed to do it. He got sent overseas. I mean, I'm thinking of just a couple of things I've heard this year alone. So we try to work with these families on, on the maintenance issues as well. The, um, that concludes my comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Madam Attorney, we got one item to.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, at this point, uh, pursuant to our discussions, um, in study, um, at this time, we discussed the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. And I believe it was the consensus that we opt out. This is for recreational marijuana within the city of Southfield for businesses, um, to, um, take, take a hold in the city. Uh, the regulations from the state just came out and, um, the legal department and the planning department as well as administration, we'd like the chance to digest and study those rules, um, some more and make some additional recommendations. So we prepared an ordinance, uh, for an opt-out. It doesn't mean, uh, it could be, uh, you could change your mind at some time in the, in the future and revisit the issue. Um, but we are, uh, we made the recommendation that the city opt out.
Okay. So do we need to.
Um, I would. We are proposing that this be an emergency ordinance. Um, it will be given a sequential number of seventeen zero eight.
Okay.
Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we introduce ordinance number seventeen zero eight, based on the attorney's recommendation.
Support.
Okay. So it's, uh, been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we introduce, uh, ordinance one seven zero eight.
And I believe that would be, because it's an emergency, um, we would enact it as well.
Introduce and enact.
The moratorium also.
Introduce and enact tonight.
Intend, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we do it all in one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, revise it. Um, revise it, introduce it and enact ordinance number one seven zero eight based on a recommendation of the attorney.
Support.
All right, so it's been introduced, uh, it's been, uh, uh, motion's been made by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we, uh, enact, introduce and enact, um, ordinance one seven zero eight. Are there any other questions or concerns?
Certification.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's opting out.
That's opting out of recreational marijuana, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I think we're all set there. Any, any other items?
No other items, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, anything from, for you?
Uh, real quick, just a reminder, we do have an election on, uh, November the fifth. And we are also with the passing of Proposal Three, um, last November. We are a no reason absentee state, uh, state now, so you can vote absentee for any reason. And we do have it on our website, so you can, uh, request to be on our permanent absentee list, which would allow you to be mailed an application each election. Uh, currently, we have about nine thousand people on that list. And we're looking for that list, uh, to grow. And then lastly, I do want to, uh, pay kudos to the Parks and Recs. They had a summer wind down, uh, event on this past Friday evening and it was very nice. So kudos to Terry Fields and her staff. It was a very nice event on Friday. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, let's see, I don't think the treasurer's with us, any planner, accessory engineer? Okay, great. So we got just one more ordinance to enact.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we enact ordinance number one seven zero six.
It moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we enact ordinance number one seven zero six. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, meeting is adjourned.